Yes.
Thank you.
We cannot hear what's going on.
That's because there's nothing going on yet. Good morning. It is nine AM on March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, and I call this regular business meeting of the Bonner County Board of Commissioners to order. For the record, I have Chairman Luke Ahmet and Commissioners Asia Williams and Stephen Bradshaw are also present. Please rise for the invocation with Ms. Shepherd.
Would you pray with me? Dear Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the chance to pause and recognize you as Lord of our lives. We are humbled by your care and concern for us in every matter, big and small. You are attentive to our needs and we want to seek your wisdom in all things. We ask, Father, that you bless this meeting, the commissioners, and all in attendance today. We lift each agenda item to you and pray that your hand would be upon it. Help the commissioners to prayerfully seek you as the meeting proceeds, listening attentively to your voice. We love to hear from you and we welcome your guidance and wisdom. You call us, Lord, to love our neighbors as ourselves, and today we are standing shoulder to shoulder with our neighbors, the very ones that you called us to love. Help us to love others as we love ourselves. Help us to see others through your eyes. Help us have a deep, abiding love for each one here, and I ask that you bless them. Though we may have just differences in opinions, we can be united in you, Father. Let each of us work towards your goals, Father, not our own. We pray also, Father, for anyone who does not know you, to feel your presence. You know what is best for our lives and for our country, Lord, and we ask that you bring it about. We submit our plans to you and pray that you move in it. We want above all to glorify you with our lives. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands unbroken, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
The purpose of the regular business meeting is for the Board of County Commissioners to conduct the business of Bonner County publicly. Regular business meetings do not constitute public hearings wherein the public has the right to be heard on every agendized item. However, at the discretion of the chair, everyone may be afforded an opportunity to speak on a particular issue if recognized by the chair. Any unrecognized comments or disruptive behavior will be grounds for removal from the board meeting by the chair and may subject the person being removed to criminal prosecution according to law. The purpose of the public comment segment of the Board of County Commissioners Business Meetings is to enable citizens with issues or concerns which they wish to bring to the board's attention and afford an opportunity for consideration on a future agenda for possible board action. The board will not engage in a dialogue with the presenter during this session, but rather may choose to schedule the presenter's topic for board consideration at a future business meeting. Questions may be directed to individual board members for the purpose of clarifying issues or to obtain additional information for the purpose of scheduling the matter for a future business meeting. However, no action will be taken on any issue or concern brought to the board's attention during this session. The chair will not entertain under any circumstances comments derogatory in nature toward any board member, staff member, elected official, or member of the public. Pardon me, why? Thank you, Cameron. Our first agendized item is to adopt our order of agenda.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the order of agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the board?
There is. I would like clarification on the policy four forty review that you have here. I got a note in my inbox of what that policy was and what your memorandum was. Did this go through legal review of removing what was put in place? And if not, my request would be that the board not actually make a decision on that particular item historically. If you recall, this board voted with you and Bradshaw saying things like this needed to go through a workshop before a decision could be made on it. On your memo, I don't show that legal review, the rationale for changing that rule.
Your Mr., that particular agenda item has been in place for over one year. So this is not something that is new, which is also why there is not a memorandum, and it was signed by the previous chair. And I intend to bring it forward because this board is interested in defending the political free expression as a right of all Bonner County employees, and I look forward to addressing it at the appropriate time on the agenda.
So I'm gonna actually respond to you because it has been in place and it was reviewed by legal when it was put in place. You are asking to remove it. And that is what I'm asking to go through legal before you remove something because legal gave an argument with a court case to support actually doing what was done. And so in order to avoid unnecessary potential litigation, if legal approved it and it was instituted before the board removes it, it should garner the same type of review. And so it sounds like what you're saying is because it was there for a year, but that's actually exactly why I think that it should have a legal review before this board makes an uninformed decision to remove it. So I would amend the order, the adoption of the order of agenda to remove that agenda item pending legal review of the desired removal of that policy.
Is there a second?
Nope.
Hearing none, the amendment dies. To the motion to adopt the order of agenda as presented, roll call vote.
Mr. Williams?
No, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Ahmat?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
And the agenda has been adopted. The next business item is our consent agenda.
Chairman, based on the information before, some move to approve this consent agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of Commissioners? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Abstain.
Mr. Ahmat?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yeah.
The consent agenda is adopted. Our next, I, Mr. Moore, I will speak, but this is not the time for public comment. You will have your opportunity to address the board in the public comment section. Thank you. There is a little bobble on our agenda. Our first action item is actually not with Clerk Rosedale. It is with Parks and Recreation, and we have Director Pete Hughes.
I'll do it anyway. That's fine. Unless you want to do it.
We have Mr. Hughes.
I'll roll with Bob.
Oh, I retract the allegation of a bobble, and we will now move forward with the.
Bobble works. Yeah. Okay, so. So Waterways relies on general revenue through the voter registration fees that partially fund this county fund. Over the past three years, the revenue generated by the state have been less than anticipated, which the county is now seeing the effects of. The vessel reserve account has been depleted and Waterways cannot draw on those reserves to cover expenditures during the fall and winter months, where the expenditures exceed revenues and the fund balance is now in deficit. The clerk's office is recommending a cash transfer of fifty thousand from ARPA interest to offset the deficit through the end of April. Interest earned on unused ARPA funds are available to use this way. So in the budget, Pilt was expected to come in, but right now they don't have enough. The funds were sufficient for the water, Waterways, but the timing has been off, so we need to fund that temporarily to pay their bills. This would be able to roll forward into next year's budget to fund that gap every year if it's funded properly.
When the funds do enter into the county coffers, Mr. Rosedale, will we put that fifty thousand dollars back where it was, or is it then going to stay?
No, that'll be.
So it will stay static?
It'll stay. It'll stay there. Yep.
Was this reviewed by legal?
I don't know. I didn't submit this. I'm standing in repeat. Was it reviewed by legal? Bill, do you know? Is Bill there? Bill, was this reviewed by you?
Uh, I do not recall taking a look at this one, no.
Well, we can wait a week. We can wait a week on this. He's got bills that haven't been paid, but we're happy to wait a week on this until Bill takes a look at it.
So I would like to wait the week I participated in an ARPA discussion regarding changes that have been made, and I'd like to make sure legal reviews are used of that because they're going to start being more stringent looking at what we're doing, so.
Sure. This is not ARPA money, just.
It's ARPA interest money. I understand.
Interesting.
Yes, so I would like to wait for legal to review.
Okay. Let's see you.
That's fine.
Okay, so we'll just thank you, Mr. Rosedale. Before we get to clerk number item two, the expenditures that I have in my packet are for recreation, which, well, that's now a pass. Risk, the SIF State Insurance Fund, invoice one, eighteen thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars, invoice two, six thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars, for a total of twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And item three, Northwest Auto Body, a repair to a Chevy Tahoe after it got in an argument with a deer, and cost five thousand, six hundred and forty dollars, thirty-one cents. There is a confidential item for technology, which is ten thousand, five hundred dollars. Mr. Rosedale?
Okay, for you commissioners, I have fiscal year twenty-four claims batch number eleven in the amount of four hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifteen cents, and demand batch number eleven in the amount of six hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents, totaling one million, one hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents. Out of the demands, we have two hundred and sixty thousand going to the Culver Project. We have twenty-eight thousand going to buy a new Chevy Equinox. We have twenty-one thousand for a sheriff's IT. We have sixty-six thousand for administration of healthcare, and then another sixty-five thousand for administration of healthcare, which were those recently submitted, and a hundred and five thousand for medical claims themselves.
I move to approve payment of the FY twenty-four claims and demands in batch number eleven totaling one million, one hundred and eleven thousand dollars, one hundred and eleven, two hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmat?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners. Next, I have EMS batch number eleven in the amount of twenty-five thousand, ninety-three dollars and ninety-five cents for your approval. There are no demands.
I move to approve payment of the FY twenty-four EMS claims to batch number eleven totaling twenty-five thousand, ninety-three dollars and ninety-five cents.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmat?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Our next agendized item is a presentation from B. Speakman with Farm Bureau, and B., you can speak from the podium. On February twenty-third, yes, on February twenty-third, the board voted to accept the Idaho Farm Bureau property insurance proposal and to sign. B. Speakman is here so that in the business meeting, it can be made clear the benefits to Bonner County.
I'm gonna have a point of order on this. Bonner County staff, to include myself and the risk manager, have not received the policy. It has been requested. Also, Commissioner Ahmat refused to allow us to consult with our broker on this. Your action item doesn't include us sitting through a presentation that we would not have reviewed. This isn't an appropriate avenue for that. Our broker hasn't seen this policy to do a compare and contrast from their policy to our policy. There's a lot of questions. This, your item isn't a presentation from Farm Bureau. And I have not, I don't have the policy. Risk doesn't have the policy, and I've asked, and actually I asked as early as yesterday, and the answer and the communication that you've given regarding this is not allowing us to ensure that we're getting what you're reporting. And so I would argue that this is not an appropriate, and that's not what we have on the agenda.
Commissioner Williams, I find it unfortunate that you believe that saving the county hundreds of thousands of dollars while improving coverage for the taxpayer could be possibly deemed to be inappropriate. I personally find it to be germane, appropriate, and the absolute duty of a public servant to safeguard and steward those resources.
Which is why what you would do is follow the process that we have in place. So I want to remind the county of what.
Commissioners is the process.
No, I'm speaking here, though. And so what happened is our broker came to present something to the board, and under Commissioner Ahmet, he removed people that flew here to talk about Bonner County insurance. You denied the people that we currently are paying to insure Bonner County. That has nothing to do with whether or not the presentation or the policy that this presenter may have is the policy that the county should buy. It's that you are ignoring elected officials and key players to include a broker who tried to present to you the risks and benefits of making a decision to drop insurance that we already paid for and buy a different form of insurance outside of our budget line that would negatively impact in not just the dollar amount, but the reputational risk of doing so. I have asked for the policy. This is not how a sitting commissioner, how a risk manager or other electeds receive policy information. This is not, and that is not what you have agendized here. Because had you had that, that item agendized as a presentation about a policy that I have not received, I would have actually asked to amend the agenda to remove the item because that's not what we're supposed to do. And you're absolutely right, saving money is good, but it doesn't mean, that is a way of disregarding what I'm talking about. I should receive the policy. I should know what we're talking about. So should Risk, so should our broker. Because the decision can have an implication that we can't recover from when we have to renew in October our property insurance. This is not how we conduct business.
Commissioner Williams, thank you for those comments, but Ms. Speakman has given a presentation. She has been working very much so over the last two weeks with our risk department. She has also been working with Redmond, and there was a reason. And there is also statute that puts the responsibility on the Board of County Commissioners.
I'm not disagreeing with.
Commissioner, we are not here to argue. Ms. Speakman?
No, I'm not. First, I'm not arguing with you that a presentation by Farm Bureau is not what's on this agenda. And to have a presentation that doesn't tell us what it is, didn't allow me the right to say I want to amend the agenda because of the reasons that I stated. This is not, it's not even fair to Farm Bureau. She did put in a lot of work, but you don't hide the work from sitting commissioners to say I want to open present a policy.
You were at all the meetings. Your comprehension is not her fault.
Mr. Williams, you chose not to attend the meeting.
No, I did not. No, I did not. No, we're not going to continue doing this. You guys have all, you guys have not had conversation with our broker to do this. That is not how this is supposed to work.
I'm sorry.
I don't have a policy.
Permission from our broker. Our broker needs permission from us.
And that is an exact example of what we're doing wrong. We have a broker for a reason. And just so that everybody knows, if you buy outside of what they're doing, how do they ensure that we're getting what we need? I'm not saying not to. I'm saying I don't have the policy. The risk manager doesn't have the policy. And so this is, you have intentionally withheld, and no one has ever addressed the issue that Farm Bureau, and this was part of the presentation from our broker, risk manager, and second insurer. Farm Bureau doesn't write property insurance like this. This is different. This is a request that was made by Commissioner Ahmat.
Commissioner Williams, I am going to step in as the chair.
And we're gonna be here for a long time because I, I am owed the policy, so you can go and get the policy and send it because I am a sitting board member, and when I ask for the policy, I should receive the policy. Someone withheld the policy from myself, risk manager, and Redmond because to this moment I have not received a copy of the policy. And so I cannot make any kind of concession to what you're trying to do. You did, it's not on the agenda. A presentation from Farm Bureau is not on an agenda. It actually tells me that I'm supposed to be looking at a contract, so I would like the contract. That's what the agenda language says. So I just need the contract.
Your packet different than mine?
Commissioner Williams.
A letter that says we're saving a lot of money that doesn't tell me coverage is not a contract. So that is what the agendized item is. So I'm gonna turn to Bill Wilson because he's here online. Commissioner Ahmat agendized regarding property insurance contract with Idaho Farm Bureau. They have not provided the contract to the board members. They have not provided the contract to Risk. They have not worked with our broker. I am saying this is not properly agendized because had it been, I would have brought up that issue and concern for the good of the county. There is no reason not to have provided that, and this is only indicative of a contact with Farm Bureau and not treating the board as a unit. Because this should have been done through our risk manager, our broker presented to the board.
It was done through our risk.
So I would like it, I would like an opinion from legal on moving forward.
So Asia, this is Bill Wilson here for everybody listening. I guess the question is to the entire board. Does a contract exist? I myself have not seen one. If so, why would it have not been produced for everybody? So just trying to get some basic information.
I will address that, but Bill, what has been going on is that we voted on it. It was presented, and now we are about to present to the public. I emailed you about the contract. There has been nonstop work from Mrs. Speakman in regards to this proposal. What I am suggesting is that we listen to Mrs. Speakman, and then as I emailed you to get it to you, as the email said, to avoid litigation. And according to thirty-one dash eight one four, insurance of county property, this is a responsibility of the board. So what I'm proposing is we follow the agenda that was legally noticed, voted upon, we listen to the presentation from the broker, and we move forward.
Just asking, but do we actually have a contract available for, that the board is, is something the board can actually sign at the conclusion of the presentation? Does that exist?
It's in her hand.
Okay, and is that, has that been disseminated prior to today's meeting? Does any, like, who is, who has actually seen a copy of that?
The contract has not been seen because of the changes. We're gonna deal with the presentation. It'll be presented to you, and if we want to re.
Bill, I have a very significant problem with the way in which commissioners are trying to address something that could be so catastrophic to Bonner County. So even the talking around in circles over where a contract is, as a business, Farm Bureau should not want to do it this way. But as a Board of County Commissioners, as I'm asking for legal advice, this is not reasonable and appropriate. We do not do contract review without having seen it. As early as March fourth, which was yesterday, when I did a follow-up, it still says, I have heard that there's a contract. When I receive it, I'll forward it to you. I have not seen a contract.
So I would say, I would say to the entire board, if, if you're asking for legal review of this document, I mean, typically, my office has a standing, a standing rule that we have up to two weeks to review a document. We would never be able to provide that review if the document is being presented or amended at the time of the business meeting where it's supposed to be approved. So I don't.
Bill, it's a standard property insurance policy. It's not a rocket science.
Thank you, Bill.
We do not sign contracts for our. No, we're not. We, this is gonna be long until you guys give in because you two are costing us a significant amount of money with the way that you make decisions. This, you literally wrote a memo saying, for example, it has, Farm Bureau Insurance presented the Bonner County Board of Commissioners a proposal to provide property insurance which will result in significant savings, increased coverage in local agent for Bonner County. How do you know that if you haven't seen something that I have not seen? It is disingenuous, it's unprofessional, and you don't do it this way. I am telling you, the decision just to change Farm Bureau, even if it saved you a dollar, is significant to do. Remember, people, you guys were told over and over again that we had to request extensions from our current insurer. We begged thirty-day increments three separate times to when they gave in and said, fine, we'll give you a full policy until October. And now we want to go ahead and drop our insurance without having reviewed something reasonable and appropriate to justify a change. This is not how we should conduct business, and it is not going to bode well. Legal is supposed to be able to review this. You wrote a statement in a memo that is not supported by a contract that I have seen.
There is no motion on the floor, and regardless of your attempts to filibuster.
We are not gonna move off this item because this is, you did not agendize.
Commissioner Williams.
This is not agendized for a presentation from Farm Bureau.
To present.
We are not agendized to review.
So am I to understand, again, you are going to refuse the majority of the board and a business will have the opportunity.
At this point because the majority of the board is costing the county a significant amount.
It is nine twenty-five, and we're gonna reset, so I can go call Bill Wilson. I apologize, B.
I'm sorry, but just so that we know, Mr. Wilson is not gonna give you an opinion in real time on this issue. I'm sorry, but just so that we know, Mr. Wilson is not gonna give you an opinion in real time on this issue. I can see, I can see that being a problem if you experience that in a different venue, but that's not what Asia does. I'm coming up, I'm showing up, and I'm trying to make sure that I make informed, educated decisions. And that's, that's the right thing, even if it makes for more work for some people.
All right, it is nine. Madam Clerk, are we ready?
Yes.
All right, thank you. It is nine thirty-nine and we are coming out of recess. I have conferred with counsel. And counsel has suggested that we wait to address this issue in a different format. I will bring to the public's attention. Today was the third time that Mrs. Speakman from Farm Bureau had been here. All of these proposals were emailed to our risk manager. They were available. And Mrs. Speakman has graciously said that she is so confident in her product that she will return a fourth time, and we will give that time to legal to review. I too am that confident in the project, and I too am resolute in doing my job. Thank you, Mrs. Speakman, and we will be in touch. The copy of the contract will be submitted.
Can I please have a copy of the contract when you send the copy to risk management, please?
Yes, Commissioner, you will have a copy, just like you have the copy of February fifth.
Are you saying that you gave me a policy contract for this insurance on February fifth?
You got all the proposals.
No.
You attended the meeting, regardless.
No, that, don't, don't mince the words. If you wanna take the time to be negative, be honest.
Oh, I was honest.
I did not receive a policy. And so that's all we're saying is we need to see the contract, which is the right thing to do. So thank you for being agreeable to remove your item from the agenda.
Our next agendized item is with Justice Services, Ron Stoltz.
Yeah, you'll have to change the resolution number on that because the other one's not the number. It's over to twenty-three instead of twenty-four.
Yes, oh, you're correct. Thank you.
Mr. Stoltz. Good morning, Commissioners. Ron Stoltz, Director of Justice Services for the record. Uh, today I'm asking to surplus our former transport vehicle for juvenile detention. It's a two thousand ten Ford Explorer. Uh, well, I won't. I won't share the VIN number with you just because it's lengthy and you guys will have to read it anyway. So anyway, we're just asking to surplus this vehicle. It's, it's a transport vehicle. It's become unreliable, which sets up many negative scenarios in terms of officer safety should that vehicle break down and we're transporting the juvenile offender to court or, or to the doctor or wherever we need to transport. So we have already replaced this with your approval two weeks ago of the purchase of the Chevy Equinox. So we're simply just asking to surplus this, and I'll check with Bob Howard to see if he thinks it's appropriate for the motor pool before we put it out to auction.
Fantastic.
Just requesting approval to surplus.
What's your resolution number?
It'll be twenty-three. I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution twenty-four twenty-three surplus equipment as authorized by Justice Services to surplus. A two thousand and ten Ford Explorer VIN number ending in eight nine five seven to be sold at the next scheduled Bonner County Auction, post confirming that it is not fit for motor pool. Is that okay that I added that on here? There you go. Thank you.
Seconded.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any deliberation amongst the board?
I don't have any questions.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Almont?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you, Director. Our next agendized item is road and bridge with engineer Matt Mulder.
Good morning. So we are requesting the board's approval to advertise for bids for pavement markings. So that would be centerline striping and railroad crossbuck, bike lane marking, stuff of that nature. In the past, we have been well below the threshold just to get semi-formal quotes on this and, and select a vendor, but as costs have increased, we're now flirting with the cutoff limits and needing to put this out to a formal bid because bids may be over a hundred thousand dollars. So requesting the board's permission to do that and getting this out early this year hopefully will give us better prices than in a few years past.
We had a lot of issues with the vendor that we had selected a couple of years ago, and some of those markings did not get done. And so a lot of that work was carried over to this year. Okay.
And we, we made some change orders to their contract from two years ago last year to add in a couple of the roads which we needed to get done.
All right, thank, thank you.
Yeah, I moved to approve notice of advertisement for bid twenty twenty-four roadway pavement marking project.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any deliberation amongst the Board of County Commissioners?
I don't have any questions.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Almont?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two is award of the twenty twenty-four rock crushing contract for District One. At the bid opening on February twenty-sixth, we received two bids from Peak Sand and Gravel and from Woods Crushing and Hauling. The bids from Peak was five hundred forty-one thousand and change, and Woods was five hundred sixty-one thousand and change, roughly twenty thousand dollars difference. Peak is the low bidder, and I have reviewed the bids, find them to be regular and responsive. And we are recommending that we award the full contract with all tonnages as advertised to Peak Sand and Gravel for District One. This is for two and a half inch base rock, three-quarter inch minus gravel, three eighths inch chip rock, and our anti-skid sanding material.
I move that the contract for the two thousand and twenty-four rock crushing District One be awarded to Peak Sand and Gravel Inc. For the unit prices listed on the bid submittal form for a total amount of five hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and authorize the board to sign the contract.
Seconded.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any deliberation amongst the board on this agendized item?
I don't have any questions.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Omat?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Item number three is the same kind of bid and contract, but this time for District Number Two. We received two bids as well from the same two bidders. Peak Sand and Gravel was a bid of ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars and Woods Crushing and Hauling was a bid of one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. We recommend awarding the contract to Peak Sand and Gravel for the unit prices and bid quantities. That's four thousand tons of three-eighths inch chip was the only thing bid in this district this year.
It's I move that the contract for two thousand and twenty-four rock crushing District Two be awarded to Peak Sand and Gravel Inc. For the unit prices listed on the bids of middle form for a total amount ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. Authorize the board to sign the contract.
I second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any deliberation amongst the Board of Commissioners?
I don't have any questions.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omat?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
The motion carries.
And the fourth item is again the rock crushing contract for District Three. We opened bids and the same two bidders were present. The low bidder in this case was Woods Crushing and Hauling with a bid of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars, followed by Peak Sand and Gravel with a bid of three hundred and thirty-two thousand and change. And we recommend awarding this contract to Woods Crushing and Hauling for the unit prices and tonnage quantities per the bid. And in this contract, we are getting three-eighths inch rock chips, uh twenty-four inch riprap and the anti-skid traction sand for the winter.
I move that the contract for two thousand and twenty-four rock crushing District Three be awarded to Woods Crushing and Hauling Inc. For the unit prices listed on the bids submittal form for a total amount of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars and authorize the board to sign the contract.
Seconded.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any deliberation amongst the board on this item?
I don't have any questions.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omat?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mulder. Our next agendized item is with Human Resources and Director Clark.
Good morning. Uh, Alicia Clark, HR Director for the Record. Um, today Bonner County HR is requesting approval to update the Planning and Preparedness Coordinator job description to align with the requirements of the work and duties currently performed. And this has been reviewed by legal.
Can I ask on this one, is there, for this job function, is there a job duty that relates to Sergeant-at-Arms?
Um, not in this particular job description, just other duties as assigned.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, hereby make a motion based on information for some move to approve commencing with approval of a revised job description. Planning and Preparedness Coordinator, Emergency Management, effective March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there deliberation amongst the board?
No questions.
Hearing no deliberation, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Omat?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
The motion carries. Thank you, Director. Our next agendized item is with Commissioner Williams.
All right, I placed this item on the agenda at the request of members of the community and some elected officials regarding uh today's Sandpoint will be reviewing an application to subdivide Bonner County property. And this has been a point of contention in our community. And so what I want to do is to make sure um that I get everything right in this kind of discussion is to ask Sheriff Wheeler to um come up or use the mic. He didn't leave it. No, um, to kind of address what your concerns and questions are. Um, because the purpose for me on this one is to make an understanding. It's been quite some time. And as you guys know, if you participated with anything about that patch of land in between, we went back and forth for felt like decades. And so when I saw this item and it was brought to my attention, I do not recall Bonner County Board of Commissioners making a decision to subdivide. I recall that there was a motion that passed to engage Sewell Engineering for a boundary line adjustment. And that's the hearing that I attended. I did try and seek clarification to see when there was another meeting and I couldn't find that. So I want to, if we're moving forward with that application at Sandpoint, I just want to know what's right and what's wrong. So with that, Sheriff Wheeler.
Thank you, Commissioner, Chairman Bradshaw. Uh, this all started, uh, there was a notice posted at the corner of my property, uh, six, seven days from today.
Excuse me.
Posting.
Excuse me. Whose property?
Uh, where the sheriff's, where the sheriff's office is located.
Okay, and who's the custodian over all the county property?
Can I, can I speak, Mr. Bradshaw?
I believe that every commissioner is allowed to ask questions, Sheriff.
Well, can I finish? I'm gonna actually pause for a second because you, you two are, we don't need to be intentionally disrespectful and you, you put forth.
You went on for thirty minutes about clarity while ago, Ms. Williams.
But I wasn't disrespectful. I was honest and.
I wasn't either. I was asking straight up questions.
I'm sorry, but what you guys just did isn't appropriate. I'm asking you not to. You guys have this idea of decorum for everybody else but yourselves. It's not okay. Sheriff Wheeler came up, he respected you in your position. You should do the same, please. This is already a contentious topic. You guys don't need to insert stuff into it. That's all I'm asking for.
Thank you for that, but because this is the board and I'm the chairman, I would just like to see if my understanding is similar to the majority of the boards. Thirty-one and Sheriff Wheelers.
I'm actually, I'm actually asking you to stop because what has happened here is this is my agenda item. And I asked for Sheriff, as is indicated in one, two hundred and one subsection D, that I can call on a member to present something. Let's just have the discussion in the most reasonable way, which is not the two of you attacking Sheriff Wheeler. I asked him to come up here. I don't expect people to be disrespected if I call them then to speak. I'm asking you to please stop, look at your rules of decorum. And if you don't like that he's speaking, then leave the room, but stop interrupting him, stop disrespecting him. This is unfortunate. We already are going to have opposing opinions on this issue. Please knock it off. Sheriff Wheeler, please.
No, sir, this.
Sheriff Wheeler, you're, you're not.
It is nine fifty-three.
Really?
Would you like to go into a recess?
I am not a petulant child, so you don't have to do that. What you're doing is not kind. It's not respectful. Please stop. I asked Sheriff Wheeler to present. Please stop.
Thank you. As Chairman of the Board, I would like the clarification, Sheriff. Idaho statute thirty-one dash eight zero seven, Management of County Property. A Board of County Commissioners shall have the power and authority to purchase, receive by donation or lease any real or personal property necessary for the use of the county. Preserve, take care of, manage and control the county property, but no purchase of real property must be made unless the value of the same property has been previously estimated, estimated by a real estate appraiser licensed to appraise real property in the state of Idaho pursuant to the provisions of Idaho Code, Chapter forty-one, Title fifty-four. And no more than the appraised value must be paid therefore. However, if the county assessor determines that the value of the real property is five thousand dollars or less, then the appraisal provided in this section shall not be required.
So I'm going to interrupt because the reason you're standing here is because of two zero one subsection D to provide information on the item agendized. If Commissioner Bradshaw and Commissioner Omat want to have a discussion with the sheriff about interpretation of rules, that's an item that is not on the agenda. So can we please go back to the agenda item?
I'd like to address the Chairman Omets. I have, I have no objection to your authority. Um, if you may, if you allow me to make my presentation, you'll see what my concerns are. Because I have, you have the authority to do whatever you want with the property. That's not my contention here. Well, so if I can finish, I would like to do that.
And I apologize. I didn't mean to start a fire.
Bonner County, oh, you have control over the property. That's not my contention here.
Thank you, Sheriff. I look forward to your remarks.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So this notice was posted that there was go, there was a, been a request for a subdivision of uh three parcels that is located and owned by Bonner County and those two parcels were the Fairgrounds and the Readiness Center, which were going to be combined. Um, I should like to, to point out, and this brings up your point, uh Chairman. Um, on five twenty-five, uh, you submitted a rezone application to the planning and zoning. Prior to that submittal, um, there was legal agenda posted, an action item, a hearing was held before the Bonner County Board of Commissioners. There was approval by a majority of the board and a contract with James Sewell and Associates to plat and rezone portions of the Bonner County Readiness Center and the Fairgrounds property. So on, on nine twenty-seven, after we went through the planning and zoning, the full city council approved that rezone. Um, then on the twenty-seventh, uh, the city council approved the rezone along with zoning the, the development agreement, which is a requirement of the city of Sandpoint's rezoning process. That agreement was signed the next day on the twenty-eighth by the city, uh, council president Kate McAllister and at that time Commissioner Chairman Bradshaw. Thus, it concluded the process of rezoning the parcel, Fairgrounds property and the Bonner County Readiness Center. Um, I, when I saw that, I requested copies of the, of when any kind of meetings were done after that, when the request was going to be made to ask for a, a, a rezone um of the, a subdivision, I'm sorry, a subdivision of the property, which is a whole total, uh, total project, a total different project. Um, I, I have not, I received it ten day later, so I do not have um copies of that. Um, when I made, uh, when I sent this information to legal, Bill Wilson said, we thought we were done with that. He had not reviewed any contracts, any proposal. He was not aware. Commissioner Williams was not aware of any uh legal meeting that was agendized and approval for Commissioner Omet or the Board of County Commissioners to request a subdivision. That is a whole new item. It's not part of that. That was finalized, that agreement was signed and that those, those plat lines were changed and were, were uh recorded. My question is, is was there a meeting to authorize this submittal? Was there a meeting authorized to the expenditures of funds to Sewell, James A. Sewell, to produce more drawings? Because one of the drawings that were submitted was, was, was created on two, two of twenty-four, February um second of, of this year. So I'd like to know, were those funds approved by this board? Or was there a secret meeting um that was made that approved that?
Well, I understand you're alleging there was a secret meeting.
No, I didn't.
Oh, I just wanted to be clear.
No, I'm not alleging.
Oh.
I'm not alleging at all. It says here, the application um was submitted and Idaho Code seventy-four, two oh one states formation of public policy that open meetings, the people of the state of Idaho and creating instruments of government that serve them do not yield their sovereignty to the agency so created. Therefore, the legislature finds and declares that it is the policy of this state that the formation of public policy is public business and shall not be concluded in secret. Um, Title forty, Title seventy-four talks about transparent ethical, ethical government. Um, it says there in seventy-four, two eight, violations in action of any deliberation or decision making that leads to an action occurs at any meeting which fails to comply with the provision of this chapter, such action shall be null and void.
Would that be similar Sheriff to the ICCO meeting?
Can you, can you, can I actually ask you guys to stop for a second? Because we're, this is not a hearing, we're not interrogating somebody. And so I would like the sheriff to finish his discussion and then I would like to propose what my questions are. This is not, you're using your position to just be unkind unnecessarily. We're not talking about the ICCO or whatever you, you're referencing with regard to that. We're talking about a real issue that's going to happen today that members of the community care about. So I'm again asking you to adhere to the rules of decorum that you want others to adhere to and allow the sheriff to complete. And if you have a question, fine, but not, you're, we're not interrogating somebody. I have questions also about this as we move forward. So please stop.
So, I, I just finished, my, the end of my comments were, is the, the, the application was submitted and accepted on, on December, I think the seventeenth or fourteenth of this year. And prior to that, the application itself said the Bonner County Commissioners were applying for this and Commissioner Omet was the signature of that. And, and the, the name of the project was the Bonner County Fairgrounds and Readiness Center. Those are two separate platted pieces of property. And I would say that the Fairgrounds did not have any comment on that, the Fair Board. Um, none of the other elected officials had any comment. There was no meeting that I'm aware of that discussed this before that action was taken and the expenditures of county funds to pay, to pay James Sewell. So if that's the case, without a meeting and approved, um, that's a violation of open meeting. And so.
I'll clear that up for you.
So that's what I want to know. And there, there is, this is really interesting. I, maybe I'll, I'll just uh read this section for you, which I think you may be addressing.
Well, I'm holding the contract, Sheriff, where it was voted in a public meeting with the contract that was legally signed, so it will be pretty easy to clear up.
Okay, well, uh, what I'm saying is that the contract that was signed was for the rezone, not a subdivision of the property and that whole process was concluded on, uh, on the twenty-seventh of September. And there was all of the reports that were done. So this is, this is from my summation. I'd like to know, was this a new deal? Was this a new contract that had to be signed? Or was this part of it? Because I know that uh that uh, that uh, when you talk about the notice of meetings and agendas, it says agendas shall be required for each meeting and the agenda shall be posted in the same manner as the public at the meeting. An agenda may be amended. Um.
I have the agenda as well here, Sheriff. That was nearly noticed, agendized, voted on in a public session. The contract was.
What is most unfortunate is you keep insisting on being unkind unnecessarily. Can we just let him finish and then we can have the discussion and without the attitude? So the, the issue that I had was I only recall talking about the boundary line adjustment and that was the hearing I recall some members of our community attended. When I looked, I looked for, was there another um discussion, decision, action item related to that? Um, not only could I not find one, but Commissioner Omet did point back to that very first um app, decision as that was what was moving forward. And so for me, the question was, did we give approval for a boundary line adjustment, which was a set cost of twenty-five thousand dollars? And has the project grown without doing it in open meeting? Because I can't find another date or decision other than the one that we went back and forth on Sewell Engineering too many times if you're a business owner to have to deal with us like that. But that's the only one I remember. And so part of my, this is part of our question is, since this was, this was during a time when we were talking about RV campground and grants, maybe one of the two of you have information for this meeting that could address the concern that what was voted on was valid as we move into what's happening today at Sandpoint because people had questions. And I would like to have that conversation in a way that if you have a date of a hearing to just tell us what date this decision was made and we can listen to the tape and we can say we lost the battle or we have an error, we need to stop moving forward and actually make a decision. That's what needs to happen on this and it's reasonable because that went back and forth a lot. And this has been a point of contention. So Commissioner Omet, did you want to share the decision, uh, date and what the decision was? And then, because this act, and then we can just confirm that and we'd be done.
And I, I'd like some clarification. So the, what is a decision in open meetings of public is any determination, action, vote or final disposition upon a motion, proposal, resolution, order, ordinance or measure in which a vote of governing body is required at any meeting at which a quorum is present. And the, the, the second part is that, but shall not include those ministerial or administrative actions necessary to carry out the decision previously adopted in the meeting, held in compliance with this chapter. So my question was, during those, those discussion, there was never the word subdivision mentioned in any of those. And so if that was part of. And so if that was part of the project that James Sewell was, that they were going to do boundary line adjustments and they were going to create a subdivision, then, um, I'd like to have that clarification because at this point there was a separate action, a separate application, a separate al- allocation of spending funds for James Sewell that's separate from the one that was passed, uh, in nine twenty seven of twenty three and was finalized. So those are the questions I have.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yeah, I don't remember the word subdivision, but I remember when we were having the back and forth with it and he was already halfway into the work of doing the lot, the adjustments in his surveying. And we had okayed for him to finish that work. And so he may have called it a subdivision. I don't know. I would have to look at that, but, uh, yeah, I think that was just him completing what he was hired to do in the original contract.
So I remember testifying, if I may speak, at the planning and zoning and the planning and zoning committee said all this does is it, is it changes the zoning of that property. It doesn't change anything else. If there's going to be any projects or any other um, work that has to be done, the county will have to come back to them and make those proposals.
That was my understanding.
So this is a different proposal. So that was finalized and that was signed and I'm not an attorney, but I would like to ask the attorneys, I'd like to ask, is this a separate proposal? Is this a violation of the open meeting law or was this?
Or it could be a complete misunderstanding too, because if I think back to those days, they were rough. And so the question is if we need, because for me, it's not going to be a piece of paper that will confirm what the decision was. It's actually going to be going back to the tape and listening to what the decision was, um, and then what is happening? Because we need to make sure before we, because one of the things, if I remember, the city told us is the zone change was actually going to devalue our property as a county and that that wasn't recommended, but that this push was being made in part because of wanting the RV campground on that land. And that's what was at one time reported to be necessary when we had two conflicts. Cause at one point our director of planning said, we don't need to do it. But then there was something that said we did need to do it. And so I'm wondering, and I put it as this, because it was just a discussion, not to have an argument. Should we ask the city of Sandpoint to delay this decision until we confirm that we did everything correctly before we move forward and cause unnecessary uh, negativity in our community over an already contentious piece of property that we've been going back and forth on. And so I actually, on Commissioner Bradshaw is, that's how I heard it. I heard, I never heard the word that, that we were doing a subdivision. I heard it as, of actually specific boundary line adjustment was what I was told. Um, and we had a cap of twenty five thousand dollars. And I never, I don't recall seeing it come back after that hearing. Um, so I, my motion that I'm suggesting is, um, unless and until the board can show that the current application to subdivide the property referred to as the Readiness Center was a decision made by the board, the Board of County Commissioners sh- shall ask the city of Sandpoint to table their review and decision pending confirmation from Bonner County Prosecutor's Office that the application was submitted in accordance with the rules that govern. And that makes it a, let's just do it right the one time. So.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Nope.
Hearing none, the motion dies, but before we move on to the next agenda is.
I'm going to actually, uh, call for order. You're not going to second the motion for discussion?
And the motion dies.
So then we're.
Chairman, I will continue because you asked a question which I will answer.
Actually, then you should have seconded the motion for a vote.
I don't have to ask your permission as chairman to speak, Commissioner William.
Robert's Rules of, I'm not giving permission. I'm talking about Robert's Rules of Order. Now I'm talking about Robert's Rules of Orders, what you wanted in order.
Really hard, but never follow them.
What in, when you want to have the discussion, that's the value of seconding the motion is it pushes it into the discussion phase? If you decline to second it, then you decline to discuss it.
So I will enter into the record, the notice from that was duly noticed this twenty fourth day of April, twenty twenty three. I will also into the record, the memorandum duly noticed, April twenty seventh, twenty twenty three that reads, the firm of James A. Sewell and Associates has already been retained to assist Bonner County with the construction and permitting of a campground near the Bonner County Fairgrounds. Due to previously unforeseen circumstances, Bonner County requires additional work on the site, specifically the plating of the entire Fairgrounds property itself, as well as the county owned property to the south. This work is required before the county can execute a boundary line adjustment, expanding the Fairgrounds property to encapsulate the site of the campground, which currently straddles the boundary line between the Fairgrounds and a vacant parcel to the south, which was signed by Chairman Steve Bradshaw on April twenty seventh, twenty three. I will also in, enter into the record the signed work order contract from James A. Sewell and Associates that says the services to be provided are the final plat and the boundary line adjustment. And it is indeed fortunate that I have reached out to the city of Sandpoint verifying that this is the completion of that project. I spoke with the engineer who has been involved in all of these projects yesterday to confirm, and he explained that subdivision is a technical term and this is the completion of this contract and that we are under budget. Our next agenda is.
Well, actually I'm going to ask a question of Bill Wilson, since you made a comment post letting it fail. The actual statement that, that, that you read didn't use the same language of this application. And so is it reasonable? And I'm not saying, I know, this was, this is a question. Is it reasonable to say that what the current application is that was submitted in December of two thousand and twenty three? The same, because it can't, it's not an extent, I don't see how it can be an extension since it's a new application to begin and ours was a boundary line adjustment, which is what he read the decision was. And it sounds like the reading of what he just said, says that we are doing another phase of a project. And I'll point out also, Bill, that when it was originally being discussed back then, it was talking about an RV campground, but that is not what we're doing now. And so what we approved was boundary line adjustment. And so the application that Sandpoint is reviewing is not a boundary line adjustment. It is actually a subdivision, which is not what our write-up actually made a decision on. Given what Luke said, is it reasonable that we revote on that issue and give pause because we didn't vote to subdivide that land?
I'm not prepared to give legal advice on this issue.
Is it reasonable for the board to add?
Item has died. We are on to our next agenda.
Actually, I'm going to push because you didn't allow it to die. You spoke after. Is it reasonable that in order to mitigate potential litigation on this issue that the board send it to you for a thorough review?
Bill, I think part of the problem is, uh, definition of subdivision in Bonner County Planning Department versus City of Sandpoint. And they may or may not have a definition of lot line adjustment. They may call that a subdivision. But, uh, that would just be a guess, but.
Commissioner Bradshaw, would you agree then to let us get confirmation? Because if you're right, then there wouldn't be an issue, but it would actually settle some disputes within the county about the land.
Motion's dead.
There is no motion. Our next agendized item was brought forth by myself and that is on January third, twenty twenty three, the previous board of which only one of the three of us remembers or was here. But I do believe I remember attending that meeting, but it's been a busy couple of months since then, and it has not all been, uh, lollipops and unicorns. The previous board of commissioners, where Dan McDonald was the chair, delete, made a, submitted a memorandum and it was the Bonner County Personnel Policy four forty. And it reads, Bonner County Personnel Policy four forty was updated on twenty sixteen. The policy acknowledges that the First Amendment provides constitutional protections for political activity. It states that there could be a reasonable disruption should a subordinate run against his or her elected office, official. Case law was not, was cited in this policy, pickering the Board of Education, which addresses political speech, not political candidacy. This board feels that this occurrence is rare and could be visited if necessary on a case by case basis. It is the wish of this board to strike this policy for the Bonner County Personnel Policy as we believe it is a constitutional right for our employees to be able to run for political office of any kind.
Absolutely.
And it was voted on and approved on one, three, twenty three. And I will submit this memorandum into the record as it has come to my attention that there are certain officials that seem to believe that they can institute policies, but I will read from the Bonner County Policy Manual. Only the Board of County Commissioners has authority to establish general policy for Bonner County employees. Any department-specific policies which have not been reviewed by HR for combat compatibility and compliance with the B O C C's master personnel policy and approved by the Board of County Commissioners are deemed void and of no effect. When you look online for Policy four forty, you can find it. I will submit the email to HR, which is something that needs to be addressed. This board continues to have a significant amount of pushback in regards to freedom of speech. But I find it disconcerting that when the actions of a previous board to protect the First Amendment rights of all of Bonner County residents are legally agendized, voted on and upheld, that then through the surreptitious acts of some, the legal authority that protects the right of Americans to participate in the political process are attempted to be overturned. And so I wanted to put on the record and to resubmit in our minutes, that Policy four forty that takes away the constitutional right for our employees to be able to run for political office of any kind is not in effect for any department in Bonner County. Our next agendized item is public comment.
So I want a point of order on this.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So I want there to be consistency and I'm going to be short. When I put a discussion item on this agenda, I'm not allowed to discuss the item. I think you should be consistent with what you, um, do. And this actually is identified as an action item, discussion, decision, and you do not allow me to do that either. So I would like you to be consistent and I look forward to making a public comment and exercising my First Amendment right as you have denied every time my name is on that list.
I believe it was on April twenty eighth at a, at a regularly scheduled Board of County Commissioners meeting, which I have not listened to the tape, where you advocated against that. Then as a member of the board, you are a seated member of the body. We will now proceed with.
I'm actually going to correct you because the very first meeting of this new board, Asia gave a public comment and I would never say not to do public comment. And so my name is there, there is no rule. And I've asked you to actually state the rule that prevents me from giving public comment. But I would like to challenge your support of First Amendment by stop denying me the right to speak during public comment.
You are overruled and we will continue with the members of the public who is going to speak. Our first member of the public is Mr. Roy Fisher, our, Mr. Roy Fisher, I do have Randy Stolt signed up for Zoom, but we're going to do the Zoom comments after we do the members of the public that are physically present.
We should, Bill Wilson's been trying to get a hold of you.
Oh. Paul, Bill, what do you got? Pardon me, Roy. Bill?
Commissioners, since the agenda item that Mike presented, um, earlier this morning regarding ARPA funds, um, I've been emailing and talking with our comptroller, Nancy Twynham. Um, I have reviewed the resolution and the memo and I believe that you can take it up now and approve it. It uses interest on ARPA, which is specifically called out in the treasury rules as being used for any legitimate business purpose. And so, uh, since that's still been agendized and the meeting has not been concluded yet and the matter is timely because we need to pay bills in that department, I would ask if you guys would take that matter back up, um, and, um, consider it again. It does have my legal approval.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, because we moved the number for that one to the other resolution, which we will make this one subsequent, it's twenty four.
Thank you.
Okay. If you like the motion.
I would appreciate the motion, sir.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty four, authorizing the clerk to transfer cash of fifty thousand from Grant Fund zero four seven dash two two zero zero to the Waterways Fund zero three eight dash five five zero zero. Thank you, Bill.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or deliberation amongst the board?
Nope.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmat?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Thank you, Clerk Rosedale. Thank you, Bill, for your, for your haste. And our first agendized speaker is a Mr. Roy Fisher again.
Yeah, yes, Commissioner Ahmat. I just wanted after I was here at the last meeting and to bring up a few things. One is just Robert's Rules of Order in general. I've run a lot of meetings and you're doing pretty good here. Um, but I heard from people out here, they seem to have doubts about Robert's rules. Without Robert's Rules of Order, there can be no good meetings. They will all be overrun. There will be no order. So anyone that doubts that Robert's rules should be here, needs to wake up. It's just the way they run all successful meetings in the world, not just our country. Now, unruly persons, I just wanted to bring that up. I think that you were totally correct in not entertaining the idea of giving them something. Rewarding unruly persons is going to bring you a lot more unruly persons expecting free money. Totally wrong. I just, you will never have a meeting, no matter who's in charge, if you pay unruly members. The First Amendment does not say you get to yell fire in a theater. You go down on the street corner and say anything you want, and that's the First Amendment. But you come in a, a meeting ruled by Robert's Rules of Order. You've got to abide by Robert's Rules of Order. So the First Amendment, these people think they're going to sue you on the First Amendment. They're wrong. In this case. Point of order seems to be at every meeting I've been so far in North Idaho. People can bring it up. But the point of order, if you go back to Robert's Rules of Order, if they bring up their point, it is ruled on by the chair. So you have to say if the point of order can go on. If it can, then we hear out the point of order. But point of order is ruled on by the chair. Uh, I think that's really all I wanted to say for right now. But I did want to say that it was, you were totally right in not saying we're going to settle out of court for unruly members. Like I say, you will have a thousand people in here being unruly, wanting free money. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Uh, and for the following members, please state your name and whether or not you are a resident of Bonner County. Our next speaker, and if I mess up your name, I apologize, Mr. Nick Doco?
You got it right?
Oh, good.
I am a resident of Bonner.
If you'll state it, your name.
Resident of Bonner County. Thank you. My readers on here. I just wanted, um, express my credentials, not for credentialism, but I've seen you in some meetings. Uh, I feel like, uh, try to present your credentials as a way that your, your voice might be more superior. So I would want to present you mine. And I'm retired law enforcement, twenty one years, promoted to the level of captain, oversaw a large department with a thirty two million dollar annual budget that compounded over three years. So at any given time, I was managing sixty to ninety million dollars. So I understand a few things. My department, my section was one of six in a division that was one of twelve, that was one, uh, that was in part of a department that was one of eight in a overall state agency. So a very large state law enforcement agency that I, I used to work for. So I understand a little bit about government. I understand a little bit about managing people, understand a little bit about having to do things with teamwork and the sense of the esprit de corps that you might have experienced in your time with the, uh, I believe it was the army.
That's correct.
Okay. So I appreciate that. Um, I want to share that with you. Um, that's why I'm here today, because I've seen some dysfunction with the board and I've seen some things that I would like to hopefully, um, get fixed. Some people might say it's good that you have some dysfunction here because there's less things you can pass and we as citizens have less government influence in our lives. But I think all of us would like to see a board that's more functional. Uh, the part being is that we have boards across the ca, uh, the United States that have people getting challenged to fights. Uh, the part being is that we have boards across the ca- uh, the United States that have people getting challenged to fights. Um, doing inappropriate things offline. That's not necessarily what's occurring here, but. I wanted to come and talk about the fact that I haven't seen my road get plowed in about three day uh, the last three storms, why it's not happening. I want to talk about housing. Housing is a huge issue here. And I think sometimes some of the issues that we see here is it it presents like it's us versus them. I'm a transplant, you're a transplant. You might have been here longer, but we're both transplants. We're none of it, neither one of us was born in Bonner County. So uh, your time here in Bonner County accounts for something, but it doesn't count for everything. Because I think people can come here and bring good things to the table. I would love to get away from the um us versus them. I would love to have you guys look into people with second and third homes here. Maybe he's having a higher levy. Maybe having a vacancy tax. I'm not a big fan of taxes, but part of the housing issues here is that we'd have um. So many houses that are second and third homes, yet we have people that are born here, people that have been here a long time, can't afford to live here. So we would love to find a solution for that. There was a report almost uh, two years ago, I think, that came out, talked about some things that could be done. Lastly, um, sometimes Commissioner, you just gotta say, okay, I learned on law enforcement. People give you a hard time. Sometimes you just gotta say, okay, and move on. I appreciate that you do stand up for the things that you believe in. But I also was told once we have to pick our battles, not knocking you on anything, just giving you some friendly advice.
Thank you.
Uh, you, sir, uh, I would just say that um, like I was a captain, I was a lieutenant, I was a sergeant. I was an officer and I always saw my job as the leader is that I had to support the people below me. I would rather have their support than the ones above me. And you, sir, you're like the senior guy on this on the shift. I would expect more from you. You're also, I know you have a side job. Where you're a minister, so I'd expect more, some more leadership to show from uh you as a senior guy. And let's work a little bit more together. There's a lot more things I wanted to say, but I appreciate your time. Let me speak today.
Miss Jennifer Kramer.
Jennifer Kramer, Bonner County, for the record. Um, I have two things I want to address from today's meeting and. The whole Farm Bureau presentation or supposed presentation and not releasing. They're just, there's obviously something underhanded about the whole way that was done when. A seated commissioner asks for the contract and it's not given to her and. It, so I just, um, I agree with the decision to postpone it and I. Would recommend that you just keep everything above board going forward.
We, we all three got the proposal. We all three got the package.
So anyway, that wasn't.
Let's let Ms. Kramer speak.
That wasn't how it appeared. And then the other thing I wanted to address was the policy four forty. Luke, that you put on the agenda and I emailed you yesterday because there was nothing in the packet about it. And you gave me a snide response and I didn't quite follow and you can. Hopefully not give me a snide remark about that, but didn't follow your comment this morning in the meeting because. From what I understood is um, the board under the leadership of Dan McDonald added that policy. And what I understood you to say today is you're taking it away. And so. It was very convoluted, but I guess the fact that you didn't put it in the packet. Is in violation of your standing rule number one, and so I wasn't able to do any advanced homework. To try and understand it prior to coming here. So that's an issue for me. Thank you.
Jennifer, just to clarify for you. I did not receive that and we did, I have sent all of the elected officials confirmation that there is no discussion with our. Broker on this either. So hopefully we can get past today and fix the problem and have everybody receive that contract.
Our next speaker is Miss Christine Logue.
Good morning, Board of Commissioners. Um, I did have a couple of questions that that, oh, Christine, I am a Bonner County resident. Um, I had a couple of questions this morning and it's slated from a brief. Encounter in the stairwell this morning, Mister Omat. Um. My question is. Was your dad any part, well, let's, let's, let's re- re- rewind this little bit.
Let me help you right now, Miss Logue.
Okay.
The chair will not entertain under any circumstances comments derogatory in nature to any board member, staff member, elected official or member of the public.
Time.
I am aware, the time is continuing and I am aware of your comments on social media, but. So you will not be speaking negatively of any of those.
I'm not speaking negatively in any way. I'm asking you a direct question. On your campaign trail, I heard your father say that he was part of Farm Bureau. And I'm asking if this decision to go with Farm Bureau has anything to do with your dad being part of the Farm Bureau group. And you're not supposed to answer, but you did on the last one. Um, where did this go? Um, and then, so that was one of my questions, if that was any of the reason for selecting Farm Bureau to go with as your. Insurance agency. Um, it was slipped into, a- as I was listening. To your comments on the insurance, the term had had access, not. That Asia had access to the um, to the premium. Didn't say that it was delivered directly to her. She's stating that she hasn't received it. So that was a question, was just saying that it was access, not delivered to. And then I was also questioning whether your um Farm Bureau broker is. A family member or a friend. So those are the questions that I had and. It's, you know, that, those are pretty simple, you know, and I don't appreciate you taking my time, okay? You won't answer any of my questions as I'm asking them. Great, but you won't answer them as I'm asking them, or you've made it clear that you won't answer them as you're asking, but you, you felt free to interrupt my time. That's all I have to say and I look forward to your answers.
I'll answer it. Farm Bureau was uh brought in when I was renewing the property liability insurance on my church. And we had just got the news that our property insurance for the county was skyrocketing. And I asked, did she do like entities for counties, cities? And they said absolutely, and I immediately gave her Christian Jocelyn. Our risk management guy that all that goes through. Is that not what happened, Mister Jocelyn?
I appreciate that, Bradshaw. Did you have any other answers?
I'm gonna wait till you take a seat, Miss Logue.
I can't be addressed when you're answering my question?
I will, yes, you may. So there are two sides to the Idaho Farm Bureau. There is the market side that sells products. And then there is the farm side that deals with farmers. My parents happen to run a farm. You have insurance over here, you have farming over here. My parents, the farmers, are involved in the Farm Bureau Federation. There is no relationship with insurance. I am not related to a Mrs. B. Speakman. I do not have any professional relationship or did not have professional relationship with her. I actually do purchase my own personal insurance through Farm Bureau, but it is not with a Mrs. B. Speakman. So my dad is a farmer, of which I am proud of. He has no relationship with the insurance side. Idaho Farm Bureau Insurance. Farming. I come from a farming, a farming and a public service background. Did I answer your questions for you today?
Seems to be, so he does not go on, sit on a board in any way, shape or form.
Farms. Farms, yes. The farmers sit on farm boards. I don't know.
No, I do understand. I knew Mister Poyer.
Insurance, insurance board.
I clarified. I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next public speaker is Mister Dan Welly.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Dan Welly. I live in Bonner County. I have prompted this morning to comment after reading a well-written notice of toward on behalf of Richard Kramer. Uh, realizing that yet another is coming. I want everyone to understand that everything I'm about to say is due to the actions of Chris Commissioners Omat and Bradshaw. For bringing this county closer to financial room than the even they could have predicted. It's not as though they haven't been warned by Brian Wilson, the public prosecutor, fellow commissioners. And many others, including myself. I'm not a lawyer, but I worked in a job where they provided us with education. Which was intended to prevent us from incurring just this sort of problem. It does not appear that you paid any attention to any briefings you had on the subject. First and foremost, among the things they taught us was not to act outside the scope of our employment or duties. That's where you lose your qualified immunity and a whole boatload of bad news gets dumped on you. What is your constituency? What your constituency needs to know is who is going to defend you? The same lawyers whose advice you ignored? And if they legally can't defend you, who is and who's gonna pay for it? It shouldn't be your constituents. When Sandpoint P D refused to make an arrest for trespass, you initiated an action outside the scope of your duties as a commissioner. You took that action on your own. You made a citizen's arrest. How are you going to defend yourself? Everything you did is on video and everyone here has been a witness. I have copies of my statement for you so that it can be put into the record.
Thank you.
Is that it, Mister Welly? Thank you, Mister Welly. Our next public speaker will be Dmitry Borisov.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, Dmitry Borisov, today is in Bonner County. I'm here to address a concern pattern of behavior exhibited by Chairman Amad. Which undermines the principles of transparency and adherence to the legal protocols within our county government. While Chairman Amad often emphasizes the importance of following laws and ordinances. It appears that he selectively chooses which rule to abide by, disregarding the advice of legal counsel. Just a few weeks ago, this board passed a resolution to have legal present, presentation present at all meetings. However, recent events suggest the chairman is not adhering to this mandate. A prime example is yesterday's special meeting, which was labeled as personnel-related, but. But pertain in state to litigation about individuals who are not county employees, namely Mister Bowman and Mister Kramer. Chairman Amad's statement during the meeting suggesting that we could cure it tomorrow indicates his awareness of its illegality. By attempting to discuss legal matters without legal counsel present, he demonstrated a valid disregard for proper procedure. Furthermore, similar issues were raised on last week's agenda by Commissioner Williams. Yet Chairman voted against addressing them, even in the presence of legal counsel. That raises questions about the motives and what he may be attempting to conceal. This is not an isolated incident. Chairman has a history of such behavior. This kind of behavior puts our county in jeopardy and is not attractive for new businesses to come in. It is imperative that we put an end to these actions as they erode the trust of our community and its legal officials. Our county cannot afford to continue having this type of use power. Or um, and reckless di- disregard for law and the export it to litigation that goes with it. Transparency in government is essential for fostering trust and promoting effective governance. It is Commissioner's responsibility to uphold these principles and diligently work for the betterment of our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Dmitry.
Thank you, Mister Borisov. Our next speaker will be a Mrs. Diane Welly.
Diane Welly, and I'm a resident of Bonner County. Um, I just want to note that we were subject today to a shell game that uh. Would have been greatly appreciated by P T Barnum. Uh, this whole business with the insurance and your business yesterday with. Continuing to today and misnaming agenda items was a shell game. Uh, the Commissioner chats that are coming up, five twelve twenty-four, the ISP will be here to speak on fentanyl. On five nineteen twenty-four, Michelle Strigati will be uh, who is a licensed professional counselor will be here to speak to us. And on five twenty-six twenty-four, Asia will speak to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Logue.
Thank you, Mrs. Welly. Our next.
Actually, it's four. Next month is fourth one. I wrote it all wrong, Honor. Thank you for communicating the chats to the community.
Our next speaker will be a Miss Johnna Plant.
I'm Johnna Plant, Bonner County resident. Um, Dan McDonald, the ex-county commissioner, once told me. That if I wanted to sue to go right ahead, that I'd have to pay double. Once for the attorneys and another time for the taxpayer attorney to defend you guys. Sometimes it's well worth spending double to sue the county. The March thirteenth memo that I spoke about last week, uh, the prosecuting attorney sent to you guys. Expressed that the first, that you should never and shouldn't um, go ahead and. Arrest somebody that's expressing their First Amendment rights. You went ahead and did so. I hope that those county attorneys will not come to your rescue. And I hope not one penny is spent by the taxpayers and it comes out of your pocket. I support Dave Bowman and Rick Kramer in their lawsuits against you, Luke and Steve. And I have witnessed myself and others who have been a victim of your abuse of power. The evidence and proof can be witnessed on YouTube on the County Commissioner channel and many. Have watched it unfold by being here in person or in Zoom. Most of us. Here understand how much patience we've had to have and endure that it, because we waited. You guys get paid to be here, we don't. Many have to get babysitters. Many have to miss work. People come to get and discuss things that are on the agenda and then many times you get here and you guys remove those things on agenda. Because you decide that it's not worth it, but we see the agenda and we come to speak about it. And I'm getting frustrated right now because it's so frustrating to be on the agenda and and wait sometimes eight hours because of recesses. Please don't be disrespectful. Recesses that you guys do and have to wait. For those three minutes and guess what? Then you don't allow us to speak. That's BS and and it's very frustrating. And I can, I, all I can say is, you know what's even more frustrating? Is to find out the Bradshaw that you actually commented, and this is your comments. I was shocked to read that you told this to a reporter. You claim the county has been unable to conduct business because of us. Which, by the way, we're just trying to give our input and you are quoted to say this is nothing less than an organized group of insurrectionists. That is being orchestrated by a group leader. Who in heck is our leader? God's my leader and that's it, but for you to even claim that is slanderous.
Did I mention your name in that? Because if I didn't and you want to put that tie along.
Please let Miss, Miss Plant finish her comments.
I'm just so, Bradshaw, you continue with your comments with mass shootings and the only person that's made comments about shooting anybody has been you. Also, you stated that the attendees of these con- these meetings were part of an organized conspiracy. To violently overthrow the county government and the governor may need to be called to suppress the insurrection. And establish law and order. Was that a joke?
Miss Plant, your time has expired. Thank.
I'm, I'm quoting him and it's.
Thank you for your comments, Miss Plant. We'll see you next week.
Yeah.
Uh, our next speaker is Mister Merlin Glass.
My name is Merlin Glass. I've been in Bonner County. That's a hard one to follow. Um, I almost forgot what I was gonna say. Uh, I just wanted to bring to the uh, the board's attention um, some of the events that are taking place here. On a topic that doesn't get too much traction uh, at the county level. Um, Sandpoint is discussing in discussions right now whether or not they want to continue with the J P A. And for those that don't know what J P A is, a joint powers agreement. Which uh, streamlines our delivery of uh, fire um, resources uh, through our county. As evidenced by what happened last year uh, in Washington with the, the Oregon Road Fire, the, the Gray Fire, the. Um, Medicine Lake Fire, uh. It's gonna fall to you guys and this is gonna directly impact your Department of Mercy Services. And that would be Bob Howard. And how that comes to play. I don't think much people uh, understand that. Um, our, our fire resources in this region, which is a lo- probably the most populated part of our county. Uh, we have eight firefighters on per day for an area of about a hundred and ninety square miles. Uh, that's woefully understaffed and how they solve that problem with the money issue is a, a public education issue. Uh, but it's, it's gonna fall to the county to, to administer. Um, when a disaster occurs and so. You being aware of that and the public being aware of it, um, can only pay dividends in the solution. You being aware of that and the public being aware of it, um, can only pay dividends in the solution and how we approach it. Um, and that's really all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Glass. Mr. Kevin Moore.
Kevin Moore, uh, citizen of Bonner County. So yeah, lots of places to go here. Um, spontaneously, we're talking about insurance and Farm Bureau. Previously, uh, we were with ICRIM. And then we got uh, convinced that we could, uh, I guess save some money and we went with travelers, I guess. And so from a layman's point of view, that seemed to kind of blow up in our face as per, there was some litigation and some. People planning and zoning got uh, eliminated and then the rates went up and so. Then we were scrambling to where we determined, well, we're better off to be self-insured. And so I personally ha- have a problem with that. I feel that we're better served by having coverage from some other entity. Uh. And seemingly going back and forth with numerous entities, it seems like it puts us in a more precarious position as per. Uh, seem like maybe we'd be in a higher rate of risk, whatever, of steadily having to have other entities cover us. But now I'm gonna go on to another layer of this because some of these are interconnected. Um. I'm still, I haven't heard any lately about auditing. Uh, because there was some big talk about uh, Darcy Smith and the Fair Board. And all that about uh, trying to get into deeper about what really happened and, and for all the citizens to, to better understand. Further on, hopefully deeper about what really happened there. And I bring that up because hopefully it is a concern for all of us, but uh, I'm also going to bring up. How this is interconnected with the verbeta scenario. Because. We, we um, ended up paying a bunch of money and so last week, uh. Asia, she uh, sent me an email after a little dialogue, whatever, that she emailed it for Bill Wilson or the prosecuting office. To come up with a better, more generic number of what that costs. And so then I emailed her back also to where it's like, I want us to not only know from. Litigation size, what we paid out in litigation, but uh, hopefully more of a number of. A money's number about uh. Through the prosecuting office, what time and effort they spent, but, but even greater than that. How much through uh, road and bridge and everybody else as per their. Construction, I'm trying to think of the right word here, their participation in the verbeta thing, beyond the litigation, how much. We, it cost us citizens to replace a bridge and, and all kinds of things that are compromised or complimentary to the litigation. Um. So I guess that was the brunt of what I wanted to say today.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Moore.
All right, thank you.
Our next speaker is Mrs. Jennifer Arndt.
I think I'll pass. I can ask my question probably after the meeting.
Okay. I'm looking because last week I. Almost stepped in it because it's never happened here. I have one sheet that I missed and I have one from two twenty-seven. I don't want to skip people and then be corrected. Is there only? This, this is from two twenty-seven. I just want to make sure I'm not skipping people.
You're skipping me. My name's on that list.
That, correct. You remain a member of the board. I stand by that. You are a commissioner. You are a sitting commissioner, sitting right next to me.
You have to make a decision.
I think, I think the distinction is I'm a sitting commissioner that you two vote me out of talking on the meeting, which is why I'm putting my name in public comment. And you two are making a decision that I don't have the right to speak as a resident of Bonner County is not in line with First Amendment rights.
Commissioner Williams, I've been working with you for fourteen months and I have yet to find a time when you do not find the opportunity to express your opinion. You are quite eloquent and you are very capable of word salad. And I hear it often. So, uh. Our next. Uh, Madam Clerk, who do we have signed up? If you would call the role for them based upon the time they signed up.
Do you just want a list of who signed up?
Just call them out one by one and let them know for the online speakers, if you signed up on time, our clerk will call your name. You will have three minutes. Please state for the record. Your name and if you are a resident of Bonner County.
Brandon Kramer.
I don't see that, Mr. Please proceed to the next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Rick Kramer.
Uh, this, again, I'm, I'm gonna ask you directly, Mr. Omot. I, this would be the fourth time I've asked you to please share with the public. What decisions were made at the AIC meeting in Boise, Idaho that you attended? And how it impacts Bonner County? This is the fourth time I've asked you to do that and you've yet to mention it. I'd like you to put it on the agenda again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Madam Clerk.
Dave Bowman.
Morning, uh, Dave Bowman, and you know.
I just, they needed to reset the time. Uh, thank you. They reset the time. I want you to.
Don't worry about it. You took some of Johnna. You could just give me a few seconds extra and I'll make up for what Bradshaw took away from Johnna.
Okay.
Uh, you know, when I first signed up this morning. I, I had no idea what I was gonna say, but I knew darn well that you guys had given me plenty of material and you always do. Because you're running a clown show there. Uh, I want to thank first of all Commissioner Williams for watching out for the taxpayers and this, uh, speaking of clown show, it's not even funny. The insurance, I was in business for thirty-seven years. And ran a company with huge exposures to liability. And I cannot imagine. Having a contract, having somebody just present some proposal at a meeting and then, and then going ahead and, and approving a, an insurance contract. You guys are, you, you have no respect for. The taxpayers' dollars. Or, I mean, clearly you don't have any respect for avoiding litigation as, and even again. As Mr. Dmitry Borisov, who didn't say his name very loud, but I want to get it out there. Spoke to the, to, to the idiocy that you did yesterday, trying to, you want to run an executive session like Dan McDonald used to do as Bradshaw admitted. Yeah, don't take the bait, Steve. Uh, that used to be standard policy before this board. To do secret stuff in executive sessions and just say, oh, well, it's for personnel. Steve Bradshaw admitted that on the record. And then you go, you're not smart enough to stop doing that. So, but anyway. Uh, Steve says. Uh, oh, well, we, it's not rocket science. It's just a standard policy. You people are presenting a proposal as if it's a contract. And when I get an insurance contract in my business, it would take days. Maybe weeks sometimes to go back and forth and read every single bit of it, run it by two or three people, get legal's opinion, the whole bit. And you idiots are willing to sit there and sign away the county and the taxpayers' money on a.
Mr. Bowman, I'm gonna stop you. I believe that.
No, you're not gonna stop me. Well, you can have.
I believe under most terms. Mr. Bowman and Madam Clerk, please proceed to the next speaker.
That was it.
All right, it is.
That's not it. No, no, that is not it because I was here and you didn't.
Mr. Kramer, hold on, hold on. We will give you your opportunity to speak. Let's just. Take a moment. All right, Mr. Kramer.
I was very.
Please proceed.
I don't think I was done.
I was very clear with you, Luke, that your proposal for this whole signup thing was gonna be a hot mess.
Hold on, please announce your name for the.
My name is Brandon Kramer. I'm a resident of Bonner County. Don't speak over me, Luke. I told you that your proposal to make this whole signup thing for Zoom was gonna be a hot mess and I specifically referenced that technology was incapable. Of managing the people in the lobby in an appropriate time and manner. And I'm, and now I was subjected to it today, Luke. I know that you won't address it. I know that you're incapable of admitting your shortcomings and your faults. However. All of that aside, the reason why I wanted to speak today is because there was a, a Bonner Daily Bee article that was published several weeks ago. About the use of the planning department's uh, plan to use um, probably some AI or machine learning algorithms to detect where there are new structures. Or structures that were removed. So that they could try to update the tax rolls and I would like you to place an item on the agenda, Luke, for the department that you oversee. Luke, that's gonna explain exactly how that's operating and if we're paying some vendor for their tech. Or, and, and if so, what that cost is going to be, or if there's someone in-house that's, that's writing the technology to do that. Will you place an item on the agenda to explain what you're proposing there, Luke? We know that you're for big government. You demonstrated that with the permit fees that you wanted to, that you wanted to uh, pass for the demolishing of buildings. You regularly do this, Luke, so please place in an item on the agenda that's gonna describe exactly how you're gonna use. Aerial photographs and potentially drone video, videography to. To unnecessarily tax and, and by my stretch, spy on the residents of Bonner County.
Brandon, in the absence of Commissioner Amit being willing to voice, putting it on the agenda, are you wanting me to place it on the agenda or are you wanting to hold out for Commissioner Amit?
I know that, I know that Commissioner Amit won't do it, so I would really appreciate it if you would, Asia. I appreciate that. Luke, Luke has been unwilling to be a representative for any of the departments that he oversees to the public at all. You can smile all you want, Luke. It's, it's the reality and you smile because you're uncomfortable and you know that it's the, you know that it's the facts. Would you like me to comment?
I would really like to not comment, Mr. Bradshaw, please. It is ten fifty.
I would like to speak without the data mining.
Uh, it's ten fifty-eight. We have exhausted the list of people who were able to sign up. And we will proceed upstairs for our scheduled executive sessions with HR in approximately five minutes. Mr. Domo, Doco, sorry, can I have a moment of your time?